So, welcome to the Committee of the Whole. I'm going to chair it from over here because Committee of the Whole is probably pretty short, and then the mayor will take over, and it just avoids playing musical chairs. So, I'll acknowledge that we're meeting on the traditional territory of the Wurundjeri people, and I'll call a meeting to order. We have the agenda that's been distributed, and I understand that item number seven B, the proponent, is asked to defer that. So, can I get a motion to adopt the amended, or agenda as amended?
Move as amended.
Second? Okay, moved in the second. Any discussion? Called a question? All in favor? Posed? That's carried. The first item on the agenda is for A, the council expense policy. Committee, you have that report in front of you. It's got a recommendation. Is there any discussion? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a couple of items that I do want to discuss. One is, under conferences and training, we've got UBCM should accommodate three members, FCM, AVICC for one member. And I'm going to suggest to council that we reconsider those numbers because attending these conferences, it's not like it's a learning conference and you come back with a specific benefit of a class, a course that you've learned, and then share that with council. There are a whole lot of other actions that happen at these conferences, including voting, putting motions forward. And I think numbers do matter. I think of having one voice from our region in Ottawa, and how that impacts us out here in the West Coast. And I think limiting us to one member attending AVICC, for instance, I think is not something I can support. The other thing I want to look at is expenses for councillors' car expenses. When I just recently renewed my car insurance, speaking with the agent, and based on the activity that I do, it comes under business license, business expense. And I'm looking at council's explanation. It says here, not just for the insurance, but in general for council expenses. For example, if a member already has home internet service, there is no need to upgrade it for council business. I do have my car insured. The fact that I have a car means that I've got it insured. What is extra in order to do my business as a councillor is the journeys that I do. And those journeys now from insurance, and I did go on ICBC's website to take a look, that comes under business classification. And there is a difference of a couple of hundred dollars in my case, and I think that's a legitimate cost that I can put back and say to the community, this is in order for me to go down to the CRD to attend the Victoria Family Court meetings in Colwood or Victoria. This is, whatever the trips, and it's not just outside of the Sydney area. I, we all do, but I'm speaking now for myself, go to do site visits when someone's looking for a variance and whatnot. All of those trips, it's not the same as commuting or going to work. If you commute or go to work, you're going to one address. And if you're going to multiple addresses, the insurance classifies that as business. So, I think that's something that I would like us to look at and say, that's an expense that we can support. Other than that, I don't have anything specific that I want to talk about that, but maybe some other councillors have something else to say.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, in, I think most of it is fine. I have similar comments as councillor Fallet. So, in regards to the car insurance, I notice it mentioned somewhere in the policy or the memo that the kilometric rate covers the insurance. But I checked the CRA website, and that's what the kilometer allowance covers is basic operations, ownership, maintenance, and basic insurance for your vehicle. But it doesn't, it's not meant to compensate for the supplemental business insurance. So, the supplemental business insurance would be that insurance, as you mentioned, that cover, is the difference between going to and from work, which we should cover ourselves anyways, but for that additional insurance for business use. And so, I also recently checked with the insurance folks here. I explained to them what I'm doing. I'm, you know, going here and different places. And they said, if that's, you're doing that for the town, that's business use. And if it's more than six times a month that you're doing that, then it has to be, you have to have business insurance. I also checked some other municipalities, and the ones that I could find, there are other municipalities that cover that as well. And I have some wording for that from another policy from another municipality if we decided we wanted to do that. In regards to the conferences, I, what I was looking at was, I actually thought that there was $4,000 allocated for the AVICC, and that seemed, that seemed high. And, you know, just knowing that it's just up and down the island or the coast that we would travel, and it's usually just for, what, two and a half or so days, 4,000 per person seemed high. So, I thought that for that amount of money, we could, we could send three people, I think. And so, what I was looking at was possibly, you know, sending three people to AVICC with, we could put a cap on it of 4,000 or 4,500. I think we could probably do at least, you know, two councillors and maybe the mayor going to UBCM, and then, you know, one for the federal, the federal one. So, that's my thoughts on that. And the only other thing that I, I thought might be good to put in the policy that I noted that other municipalities did, is that they indicated right in the policy how many councillors would go each year over the four-year term. And so, because there was that planning in advance, that you didn't have to go through this process every year to figure out who was going this year, that they could take advantage of early bird rates and hotel rates that often get snapped up pretty quick. So, for example, for UBCM in the fall, there's no, there's no more early bird rates on the hotel rooms. Those are, the special rates are already taken up. So, if we had, had some forward planning, then we can save taxpayers' money and make better use of our budget. That's it for me, I think. Thanks.
Go ahead.
If there's nobody else who wants to speak.
I was just going to ask a clarification question. Councillor Keeffe's, oh, sorry. Sand even reminded us about that. I was going to ask, councillor, you said that for the business, or business insurance threshold was six times per month, so that you had to be traveling to a different site for work before you required getting business?
Yes, that's what mine was, yeah. So, normally, you're allowed to, if you're traveling
Yeah, this doesn't specify.
If you're traveling for work, you get, you know, the insurance for to and from work. But if you're doing other things over and above that, you're traveling to go to meetings downtown or other places on the peninsula more than six times a month, then you're supposed to have a supplemental business insurance.
Okay. So, I think we're looking at here, councillor Fallet has the difference between she would be using it for pleasure, whereas somebody going to their typical job would be using it for commuting. And I don't know if the difference between commuting and business would be that.
So, what I would be proposing is that councillors get reimbursed for the difference between to and from work and the supplemental. So, currently, I've just had my car insured for pleasure only. So, I insured it for business. However, I wouldn't expect the town to cover the full diff, the full amount from pleasure to, because I'm now sort of like an employee of the town. This is my place of work, and so, I'm expected to have insurance on my, on my own dime to get to and from work. So, the thing that's different is those additional trips that we have to take, that is over and above the regular commuting type of thing.
Okay. Anyone else?
Yep. Sorry.
Councillor Rintul.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think staffer looking, was looking for some feedback in general as well. And so, my comment would be with respect to the section on discretionary meetings. The final sentence refers to whether or not council wanted to set some parameters around the particular type of travel here for discretionary meetings. And in my opinion, if the councillor, you know, elects to attend or participate in a meeting of which they're not formally representing the town, that that should be on their own expense as opposed to on the town. So, I wanted to provide that perspective for council and staff's consideration when they're going to a final version of this document. And with respect to the discussion that I've heard around conferences and training, the budget here overall for 2019 is $20,000. And as has been discussed, it's split between council members' ability to register and participate in a number of conferences, UBCM, FCM, AVICC, for example. I take it, my colleague councils aren't concerned with the amount, the 20K per se, it's just how it's allocated is my takeaway from this, if I'm not mistaken. And if that's the case, you know, I concur. It looks like we wouldn't need to formally budget 10K for UBCM and four for AVICC, et cetera. We've got a budget of $20,000, and it could be allocated accordingly as necessary by demand or interest. That's it for me, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. A couple of things in regards to the car insurance. The ICBC has a pleasure category, which is driving for typical day-to-day activities like errands driving at school, going on vacation. You can also use the vehicle for up to six days in a calendar month, not six trips, six days, for commuting, business, or delivery. Business is driving for business purpose. For example, salespeople, realtors who drive to meet customers going from, the difference is if you're going to one location or if you're going to multiple locations. When I started to add up the various meetings that I'm attending, whether they are in Sydney property, proper, on the peninsula, or in the larger area, I was amazed at how many trips that I am making. So, I have no, no qualms that I need to come under the business rating. There is one part in the policy regarding the difference between the remuneration, which includes travel expense. For instance, if you're going to the CRD. When I looked up at the CRD website, they classify the remuneration as your preparation for a meeting and attending the meeting, and the category is separate for travel expenses. So, the remuneration, when you are eligible for such from the CRD, it does not cover travel expenses. The other thing I want to address is when to, when to put in for reimbursement for travel expense. I think anything that's happening within the peninsula is something that I'm prepared to put under my remuneration that's coming here from, from the town of Sydney. When I go beyond the peninsula, then I think that's something that I should be able to put in my travel expenses. And the last part is the conferences. If I can direct this through you, Mr. Chair, to staff, the, the numbers that we came up with here on this report, the $20,000, are you working on that from the past years of what was spent on average by, by council?
It is more of an average than what was spent the last couple of years. I took a longer-term look back.
Okay, thank you. So, if, don't take issue with it. Going back to what councillor Keeffe was saying, 4,000 for AVICC, I would just qualify, this is not just travel expenses. This is conference costs and accommodations and everything. So, I don't know, I've never even looked at those bills. I have no idea what that's costing, unfortunately. So, but if that's, to allocate it for one member, I do take issue with that. I don't think that that's, that's in the best interest of our community. But if it's overall, I think if one of us, if some of us go at least once to FCM, I didn't go to FCM in the last term. I went to one UBCM. I would have gone to two. And depending upon the location and my convenience, I probably would have gone to all four AVCCs in my term. So, I think that does it for me right now. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
I did, I did a little bit of figuring in terms of the costs for the AVICC this year and UBCM. And staff can pipe in if I, I think I've got this wrong, but for AVICC, the conference fee is under $400 per person. It's 367. Accommodation for a couple nights would be maybe 400, $400. Other travel, 225, and then some other miscellaneous things. So, I was thinking probably one person for AVICC would be maybe 1,200, $1,200. And so, that's why I thought that we, within that $4,000 budget, depending, we could likely keep that $4,000 and send three people each year, you know, maybe even four, depending, you know, if it was here or if it was close by. And UBCM was a little bit more, probably closer to about 2,500, just because it's a longer conference, and hotels in Vancouver are more exp, if it's in Vancouver, so.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. With regards to conferences and training, we've got a $20,000 over, overall $20,000 budget. Three different specific conferences indicated with budget amounts, and then 2,000 for other unspecified local conferences. We know from experience that the location of UBCM can change, the location of AVICC can change. So, costs are going to change per year. So, I think, you know, these, these suggested numbers for individual conferences are just that, suggestions. The, the goal, as councillor Rintul mentioned, I think is to stay within the $20,000 budget. It does have that the, that the conference attendance is, is approved by the mayor. My suggestion is, is that we leave the $20,000 budget for 2019, based on the experience of people going to conference or reporting back from conference. In the fall, we can take a look well in advance of booking accommodations in 2020, and decide which councillor, what council members are going to which conferences and stay within the budget. And then if we think that, you know, it, we would benefit by greater attendance and a slightly higher cost, we can look to budgeting that in future years.
Okay. So, I'd like to try to get us to focus in on some direction for staff.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, so if I can continue, so if I can leave that, the conferences. With regards to, to the insurance item, I appreciate that there, for some members of council, there will be some increase in cost. However, I want to go, go back to earlier point in the, in the, in the staff report, that mentioned that previous to, to 2018, one-third of a council member's remuneration was, was considered tax-free to cover off expenses by council members, which could be a range of the expenses that we have listed in this report. And then, when CRA changed that, council in 2018 increased council remuneration to make council members whole, if you will, or take into account the loss of the tax-free status. So, I think the fact remains that there is an allowance factored into our remuneration and the costs of, of increase in insurance, and some of these other costs, I think should be included within, within that allowance. In terms of the suggestion in the report that we consider the per-kilometer mileage outside of the reg, outside of the peninsula, I would be in favor of that. And I would add parking, because parking is usually added to, to that. Those would be, I'm comfortable with everything else in the report.
Okay. So, in terms of trying to provide direction for staff on things, and I'll start out with the conferences and training one. The current policy simply says that councillor attendance at a conference has to be approved by the mayor. And what I'm seeing in the report is the 2019 budget has got 20,000 set out, and what I'm hearing from, from committee is that we shouldn't try to be too prescriptive about what that is. And it sounds like there's no suggestion of changing it from the mayor approving who goes to which and, and what those expenses are. Am I getting that right? Like, is that the direction we want to give staff?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So, that's, that covers that particular one. I want to pick up on the comment about discretionary meetings, and whether those should be essentially at the council member's expense. And discretionary meetings would include things like, if you want to go to the mayor's breakfast on March 5th, that the chamber is hosting, there's a cost for, for breakfast, like to go in, to go in the door. And the only one who would be officially there representing the town would be the mayor, because he's being asked to speak. If anyone else wanted to go to hear what he's saying, or what the other mayors are saying, if we don't reimburse for discretionary meetings, that's on your own dime. And that is a change from how things have been done. So, I'd point out that for the Sydney Summit, that would have been a discretionary meeting, and there was a cost associated. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I would include those costs, which I think should be reimbursed under conferences. We do have that, that unspecified local conferences. I would, I would refer to it as, as unspecified local conferences and meetings, and, and try to fit it within that budget. And again, if experience shows that we need to raise the budget, you know, slightly before, because of that. But I would, I would suggest that the way we're looking at this policy is that attendance at the, the chamber mayor's breakfast or attendance at the Sydney Summit would, would come out of the conferences and, and training and meeting budget. But because it was on the peninsula, you wouldn't claim mileage, you know, going, going to and from that.
I saw staff wanted to comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Sorry for the confusion. That topic of discretionary meetings was meant to only deal with travel costs, not so much the registration. So, those would still be paid. It's just, if you choose to go to a meeting off the peninsula that's not technically council business, we would propose that that's not covered under mileage.
Okay. If, if I could, a concrete example, the Urban Development Institute has meetings where they have guest speakers and they're talking, talking about urban planning, development, municipal matters. It's downtown lunch meeting typically. So, there would be a travel cost, which would be pretty small, and then there would be the lunch fee. And what I'm kind of hearing from that clarification is that the town would be willing to pay for the lunch, but not for the travel and parking. Is that what we want to do? Go ahead.
Yes, because it's, because for me, we just get on a slippery slope of, there's innumerable conferences that we, that we can attend, you know, discretionary conferences that we can attend that are lunches or dinners, or celebrations, or seasonal, seasonal celebrations. And I think, I think, I think it's difficult to draw a line somewhere once, once we start.
Go ahead.
It's, some of these things, it seems like, you know, it wouldn't really matter if we went or not. They're a good thing to go and gather information. But in other cases, it seemed like, I don't know where you would rate, like the tour of industry, which is I, that the chamber does, which I think seems to be a really valuable thing. Yeah, it's not, it, it is discretionary, and guess, I guess we don't have to go there. But I think there's valuable information, community building, understanding what's going on in our business sector. So, I'm trying to get a better feel for, you know, how we're going to define those things, and whether that is something where, whether the mayor would make the decision that this is something that's deemed to be of, of valuable to the, to the community, and that the town would then pay, or?
Okay. So, I've got councillor Garnet, councillor Fallet, councillor Duncan, and then the mayor.
Just, just my own personal perspective. I believe that if you're asked to be there in official capacity, I have no problem with being paid by the town. But if I choose to go anywhere on my own, I'm willing to pay the gas, the food, the entrance, whatever. That's just my own personal opinion.
Thank you. For instance, I and some of the other council members regularly attend the Sydney Business Club from the West Side Industrial Group. Don't submit a bill for that. Don't do anything else. And I, and I hear what councillor Garnet said, and I think he's right. I think if we feel that there is something that we're going to be attending that is worthy of supporting, then I think it's up to us to bring it to the table and, or bring it to the mayor and say, you know, these are my reasons. I think this is something that should be supported by the town, and, and plead our case. I think if we start itemizing which conferences or which groups, we're just going to get caught up in, in a whole lot of weeds. So, my thoughts.
Councillor Duncan?
Well, I'm, I'm agreeing with councillor Fallet. I guess I'm saying, if, if, it's one of the things, like councillor Wayne Wright's example about going to a UDI conference on affordable housing, and that's a big topic right now, and decisions are currently being made about that, or the OCB planning, it's directly applicable to the job that we're doing at the time, that that would be covered under that education and conferences. And I think if you would have your, you know, lunch plate or entrance fee paid for, that that would qualify for your mileage as well, as part of your job, that those things would always go together. If you would be paid your mileage for going for a, for an AVIC conference, or, or to one of the other discretionary in that $2,000 chunk, they all go together. But if it's something like the Sydney Breakfast Club, kind of one of those continuing general interest, maybe there will be a topic that comes up that's useful. Mostly, it's just kind of useful to get to know different players of town as things might come up later, that that one remains discretionary. And that, what you should be expected to do is make that case to, to the mayor. Like, I, I know when I was in the private sector, there was a form that we actually filled out that was, explain how much this costs, explain how this helps you do your job right now. And that went into, into the calculation about whether you were approved to go. And I feel like if a large corporation makes you fill out that bar, then the public sector, which is under larger requirements for transparency, should at least be able to make that, that bar as well, that this helps you do your job right now, and this is why. And that would be documented when we actually said what we were spending, so.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm happy to, to work with council members on, you know, mutually agreeing, being mutually agreeable what, what brings benefit, or what is of value to coun, to councillors on, on conferences. And if the travel is outside of the, outside of the peninsula, then the other expenses would, mileage and so on would be picked up as well.
Mr. Hump?
Just, just throw it out as a, as a potential alternative option for discretionary meetings. You know, another option might be that for those types of meeting, when meetings, when you want your travel costs paid for, would be the use of a town vehicle for those types of meetings, and, and making sure that you book that in advance of the meeting. But that way, it's covered, and you're not being reimbursed for mileage, but you're utilizing a town vehicle. And we also have motor memberships as well, which are potentially available to council, and that can be arranged as well.
Okay. So, picking up on the mayor's comments, the suggestion I'm going to make is that it, it sounds make is that, um, it, it sounds like we don't want to be too prescriptive, because if the policy says you can't get travel, then there isn't really any discretion. Um, I think we are comfortable leaving it up to the mayor, uh, to make the decision. Uh, the individual council member will make their case. Um, it probably would be useful if there was some kind of form that you fill out. What's this for? How much? What's it going to do for you? Something relatively simple, um, but something that would assist the mayor in making the decision. And I'm, I'm going to kind of look around, is there a consensus? And it would all come out of that twenty thousand dollar budget? Okay, everyone's happy? Okay, that's direction. Now, we get to, um, uh, the, uh, vehicle insurance. And, uh, what I'm hearing is the suggestion that, um, uh, that town, I'm, I've heard two things. One is that, uh, it should come out of your, um, uh, your new remuneration amount, uh, because it always used to come out of that one-third expense. And the other suggestion is that, um, uh, the town should be willing to pay for the difference between your, um, to and from work kind of insurance coverage and the business, uh, rating. And, um, I think we've had a pretty good discussion about that. So, um, probably the best way to resolve it is a, a motion and, uh, somebody make a motion and we'll see whether it carries or not.
Uh, I'll make the motion that, um, council expense for business, the extra business insurance on their car is covered by, uh, the town.
Okay, do I have a second?
I will second that.
Okay, um, do we need any additional discussion? Go ahead.
I, I, I might be inclined to support the suggestion, but I really don't understand the financial implication here. And so my preference would have been, had we referred it to staff to try and, uh, you know, have a little more, uh, information on this. I, I respect that, that there's been some research done and I understand that, but I really don't know in dollars and cents what we're talking about. Um, frankly, I was somewhat oblivious to the need to carry this level of insurance. At any rate, I have my to and from work and thought that I was golden. Uh, so I've got a little bit to learn myself. And so, um, um, you know, I, I realize it's a motion on the floor. Uh, I think I'll choose not to support it in that I don't understand the financial implications that we would be committing ourselves to.
Um, perhaps, and I'm just trying to facilitate the discussion. Uh, the direction we're giving staff is to come back with a report and, um, policy. So possibly staff could, um, and as part of that report, tell us what the financial implications are. And then there would be two options. Here's the implications if the town pays for it, and here's the other alternative that it's covered by your remuneration. And, uh, at the time that report comes forward, council can make its decision with full information. And if everyone's okay with that, um, perhaps we just withdraw the motion and staff's got the direction they need.
I think we've got staff winded way in.
Go ahead.
I'm quite comfortable with that direction, councillor, but, uh, just to give you some context, uh, from our research, the big difference is between pleasure use and commuting use. The incremental from commuting to business is not that significant. So, um, pleasure use is what allows you to use your vehicle for commute or business up to six days a month. And there, there's still some uncertainty about whether you actually need commuting or business. I've, uh, seen places where it specifies that commuting doesn't just mean one or two workplaces, it could be multiple. But regardless, we got, um, a range of estimates based on the, uh, yeah, typical vehicle, where pleasure use would cost, uh, eleven hundred and eighteen dollars a year. Commuting would be twelve hundred and sixty-six or an additional hundred and forty-eight. And then business use for that same vehicle would be, uh, twelve ninety-three. So a hundred and seventy-five more than pleasure, but only twenty-seven dollars more than commuting. So if the intention is to consider reimbursement for the difference between commuting and business, it's very insignificant. If the intention is to provide, um, reimbursement for the difference between pleasure and business, that could be close to two hundred dollars. Does that, uh, help make the decision right now?
Um, thank you. And I guess, so we have the motion on the floor, and we could go ahead with the motion, or we could withdraw the motion and let staff give us that information in a report and then deal with it, uh, at the next meeting when the report comes forward. And I'm simply looking, okay, councillor Duncan? Microphone, please.
Um, thank you for the context. For, for me, it actually comes down to whether or not it's supposed to be covered already in the remuneration and whether or not that is standard practice now to add it on top of the remuneration and whether that's something that other municipalities are doing. Because if it's supposed to be in the remuneration, I don't want to be the, to, to, to add on top of that, but, so maybe that would be the thing that I'd want staff to, to look into for.
Go ahead.
There's no set rules around, uh, what should and should not be included, unfortunately, and, uh, experience is all over the ra, um, the range of what people do and do not reimburse for. So I, I wish there were black and white guidance, but there isn't. The fact is, most, in most cases, councillors, uh, are not paid a significant amount with or without the one-third tax-free allowance. So whatever you deem appropriate should be acceptable. But let's do, set the rules and then everyone can, uh, follow them.
Can I ask, are staff aware of what North Sandwich and Central Sandwich do?
They're probably waiting for us to deal with this.
Okay.
Um, I believe North Sandwich is, um, is paying for it, but I'm willing to pull the motion and leave it for the staff report. No, you want to?
Okay, um, Mr. Mayor?
Suggest we make a decision now.
Okay, so, um, go ahead.
Um, you know, for me, because I do pay, uh, obviously, uh, to use my vehicle for work, uh, it sounds like the difference is minimal, um, you know, so I, I wouldn't claim it. Uh, but for some who may, uh, not use their vehicle for work and just pay, uh, to commute, um, occasional use, then, you know, the two hundred seventy-five, three hundred dollars, whatever number Andrew, uh, had, uh, you know, is a little more significant. So I'm, I'm sympathetic to that. Um, as was pointed out, the remuneration overall is, is certainly not what entices people into this role. Um, in the big scheme of the, uh, budget, um, you know, if three individuals on council were to claim this, uh, you know, I, I don't think it's, it's a big issue. So, uh, I would rather see the staff report, but if we're going to vote on it, uh, for the sake of my colleagues, I will, uh, vote in favor of it.
Okay, um, so we've had quite a good discussion. We do have the motion on the floor, um, and since the motion's on the floor, I'll call a question. All in favor? Sorry, the, the motion...
What the motion?
The motion was that the town would cover the difference in the insurance. Um, so call the question on that. And I see the motion carries, but I'll ask who's opposed? Okay, so, motion carries with two opposed. Okay, um, I think that covered everything in the expense policy that, uh, staff were looking for direction. And seeing no additional, we'll move on to seven A. Uh, Development Variance Permit Application Number DV one zero zero two seven four and Development Permit Application Number DP one zero zero seven eight one. This is one oh five, uh, oh two and one oh five oh four, Rest Haven Drive. And we have a presentation by, uh, Donald Pett, the property owner. Sir, you have the floor, and, and if you could push the button to get the red light on, great.
Good evening, mayor and councillors. Uh, sitting today is chair, committee members. Hello also to staff, to members of the public, including those who, like me, might tune in later and watch from home. My name is Don Peedy, and I'm joined here today by my wife Kathy and one of my sons, Danny. One of our sons, Danny. Thank you for the opportunity to talk to you about our ideas, which we have simply titled, "The Rest Haven Project." I'll start with a brief history. Our Sydney story starts here in nineteen eighty-seven, in this building that was built in nineteen sixty-eight. Our home is on the left in this picture, and we've been joined by a number, number of wonderful neighbors in the right-hand side there and thirty-two years of being landlords. Shortly after this picture was taken, I went up on the roof to investigate a leak. My foot went through. I was very fortunate to not fall through into the, into the bedroom below. And the solution to that leaky roof problem arrived soon after that. A new pitched roof and the beginnings of a new look. And the site for those first two roof styles looked like this. You can see a simple rectangle, slightly rotated on the lot to take advantage of some ocean glimpses. And what does the building look like today? Well, everybody relies on Google Street View, so here it is. In this picture, you can see some further additions added in the mid nineteen nineties. You can see there on the left-hand side, and the site plan went from that simple rectangle to this. On that plan, you can see a dining room and family room addition on the side, some kitchen expansions on the back. Along the way, we strata titled, and in zoning terms, we have a two-family dwelling. Just a quick note to say that we raised our boys in that house. This is our son Dave, our older son. And here's, uh, both boys, uh, out in the front yard, uh, pitching in with a paintbrush. I just want to plant the thought of that generation, and I'll come back to that idea later. Let's just hit pause looking at our site, and we'll look across the street what's going on in our neighborhood. This was the view from our front windows for many years, North Sandwich Middle School and its playgrounds. Notice the ocean glimpses that you can see in there, and you can see boat masts just there in the, in the middle right corner. So keep your eye on the boats. Boats are still there, including on these, uh, fateful days when the school was, uh, torn down. Okay, watch the boats. Oops, no more boats. But that's progress. And now our view includes this lovely new development, attractive homes, uh, in the neighborhood. So turning back to this, what do we want to do now? Well, this is the Rest Haven Project. The aspiration is to create two additional units of ground-oriented, compact, affordable, and livable, small-family workforce housing. We want to have limited impact on an existing neighborhood, residential neighborhood, a concept sometimes referred to as gentle density. Further, the objective is to realize significant environmental benefits by retaining and refurbishing the existing building rather than crushing it for landfill. So let's add those two units to the site plan on the left there. So you can see the two new additional units there, uh, just outlined in brown at the front of the building. So what will the building look like? Well, let's look, and just to give you a sense of the massing, watch the ridge line at the top center of the existing building and the dining room addition, uh, on the left there. That top ridge line is still in place, you can see it, it, there. You can still see the dining room addition on the right. So the massing is similar to the existing building, uh, just closer to the street. So the building has a combination of durable exterior finishes, colors, materials designed to fit with the neighbors, the neighborhood, especially reflecting the new houses across the street. Stained wood columns and beams, wood siding accents. Let's just go ahead and add landscaping to that plan. So there we are, an entirely new garden for the occupants and the neighbors to enjoy. But here's the thing, and, and this is why we're here today. Adding ground-oriented housing while retaining the existing building constrains the design such that we request three variances. Two relate to the site, so let's look at those now. The first one, right there, a two-way access aisle with a minimum width of five point five meters is required in the bylaw. A two-way access aisle with a, with a three point three two meters is proposed. So right there, you can see, you can see the location of the existing building squeezes the access aisle, and there's a pinch point there. We think that such an arrangement is suitable when serving a small number of parking stalls, three in this case. And we further note that this arrangement has some successful precedent within the town of Sydney. We observe that the proposed arrangements is actually an improvement on what exists now. The driveway on the right-hand side there to one oh five oh four currently requires either reversing in or reversing out. Both movements can be difficult, given the close proximity of the driveway to the McDonald Park Road intersection. So the new access aisle and a parking arrangement enables forward-only movements from that driveway. Second variance, um, according to the zoning bylaw, an accessory building must be sited not less than one point two meters from any lot line, and the roof overhang must be sited not less than zero points, um, yeah, zero point six meters from any lot line. In this design, the setbacks for the overall building and the roof overhang are in compliance with the bylaw, exceeding the minimums. However, one column is located point nine meters from the rear lot line, a variance of point three meters or a foot. So here's that building in the back, new storage building, uh, with some parking tucked, uh, under the, partly tucked under the roof. On the very right-hand side, you can see that one column that is, the, the wall of the building, you can see it there with the white trim on it, is in compliance with the bylaw. The roof is in compliance with the bylaw, just that one column. We're seeking a variance, uh, on that. So this minor variance facilitates slightly larger backyards for the two existing units. And given that the variance is, is, uh, requested for the single column, we suggest that the perception of the overall massing and citing of the accessory building will be, uh, still suitable in the neighborhood. So to look at the third variance, we need to look at the units themselves. Uh, so here they are. You can see the existing, uh, two units, all in white there, and then the new units, main floor on the left, upper floor on the right. And what you can observe there is compact, two-bedroom, two-level units on each side. Each side is about nine hundred square feet, using really all the room that's available on the site. One adaptable dwelling unit is required in the zoning bylaw. We haven't provided one. The compact layout of each new unit is, we feel unsuited to the rooms, the lifts or closet, the wider hallways, bigger bathrooms that are needed for adaptable housing. We feel that these two new units of ground-oriented, compact, affordable, small-family workforce housing will be a valued and unique contribution to the housing stock in Sydney. Our project, uh, we feel checks all of council's boxes, although with this particular project, we missed that adaptable one. Uh, by contributing, and here I'll quote the official community plan, "Contributing to the full range of housing opportunities and diversity." Okay, that's it for variances. Those are the three, and we'll unpack those variances requests in just a bit more detail, um, if we get a chance to address council and the public. Uh, so to conclude, what are we, what are we trying to do? Well, the aspiration is to create, to create those two additional units of ground-oriented, compact, affordable, livable, small-family workforce housing. We want to have limited impact on an existing residential neighborhood, and we want to realize the significant environmental benefit by retaining and refurbishing the existing building. Remember those two pictures of our sons, little sons, uh, in, in, that I, I showed earlier? Well, here they are today on... Well, here they are today on either side of their American cousin. We think it would be great if, when the time comes for homeownership for them or for other workers, for young families, that Sydney could be the place for them to put down roots. And we think that these two small houses would be perfectly suited to that purpose. Thank you for your time and interest. I'd be happy to discuss any questions or observations that you have.
Okay, so questions from committee? Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you for the very detailed drawings and also showing them on the slides. I fully support the three variances. The pole at the back is understandable, or the pillar at the back. We do have in our staff report, the, having a professional give a report on, in terms of the variance on the side, and I would certainly go with that professional's report. And in terms of the, in terms of the, was the, adaptable housing, I took a look at the detailed adaptable housing design standards, and I noted that these two units are each about 890 square feet, if that's correct? And given that they're two levels, it doesn't seem practical to make them adaptable. And I think the benefit of having two units, two two-bedroom units versus having one larger unit of, say, 1,400 or 1,500 square feet that was adaptable is beneficial for the community. The one question I do have is that when we look in front of the two new buildings, we see patio, and I can't remember what the materials are, but it's not so much the materials, it's that we see the green space on the bottom is the boulevard on the property. Can you tell me the depth of the boulevard? I don't see the measurements in the drawing, roughly?
I'd estimate, I don't know that exact number, but I would estimate the boulevard to be about eight feet in depth. I'm, I don't know if staff has a thought about that, but...
Okay, yeah, it does look like a narrow boulevard. So we see on the right-hand side that the deck is coming very, very close to the boulevard. So if we could just go back to your photograph of the front of your house, of the existing. So I guess we can't see the boulevard there or where it starts, but with the addition of the unit and the decks, that's going to be, those decks are going to be coming, particularly on the right-hand side, are going to be coming very close to the street. So just, and I just don't see that elsewhere in the neighborhood or elsewhere in Sydney a lot. And just a suggestion is that that deck might be, you know, amended slightly to, you know, for better presentation to the street. But in terms of the variances, I'm supportive of those, and I think it's great that we can, for the reasons that you gave, keep existing construction and find a way to increase the density with those additions. Thank you.
Okay, other councillor, fellow?
Thank you very much. Thank you for a very good presentation. You did a good job on that. I also commend you on looking for a way to reuse the existing house, not just for landfill, but also the overall affordability of the project. And I concur with the mayor. I can support your request for the variance, including the adaptable housing, because I think there's other aspects that are of benefit to our community, our immediate community and our global community, that balance it out. One problem I do have, and that is the tandem parking. And I note in your own letter of rationale that, if I'm reading it here, finally, we observed the proposed arrangement as an improvement on what exists now. The driveway at 10504 requires reversing in or reversing out. Both movements can be difficult, given the close proximity of the driveway to McDonald Park Road intersection. And that is where I'm having some difficulty. There tandem parking, and I note, when I was doing a site visit, I note that vehicles on both sides of the house drove frontwards in, which is usually the default position, and the drivers then have to back out. We're seeing an increased densification on Resthaven and McDonald Park Road, and I do have some difficulty and some concerns about the safety. And I would make a direction that before this goes to APC, that you're having an engineer take a look at the pinch point in the back, that we include a traffic safety report on, is this going to be a problem? Is this a potential problem? One of the things we see elsewhere in town where we've had densification, people are saying it's difficult to get out of their driveways because of the amount of traffic and the parking. And I realize that these are existing driveways right now, and that situation has been, but you're now coming looking for a variance, and this is an opportunity for us to weigh in and take a look at that. This worked 30 years ago. Does it still work today? I realize the flip side is, if a report comes back and says, "That's not a good idea," we lose two parking spots on the site. And that means you're then down one from your requirement, which would then make another variance that you have to ask for. But I think it's important enough that we do get a professional to take a look at, is this a concern?
Thank you. Councillor Garnett, then Councillor Rintul, and Councillor O'Keefe?
Thanks for your presentation, and thanks for coming with something a little different. Just out of curiosity, with regards to the adaptable unit, is there, and I understand that the front two ones are, you can't do that, but what about the back two units? Could one of those not be fitted as an adaptable unit, or is that not something that would fit within the parameters?
Yeah, thanks, that's a great question. We did look, we had a fairly extensive look at what it would take to, I'm going to say, retrofit one of the back units as adaptable, particularly Unit D there, as it stated. Unit D gets reconfigured internally a fair bit anyways, and would it be possible to make adaptable dwelling there? As a building designer, I would never say that it's impossible, but it's, it's quite, it would be quite difficult to turn either of those units into compliance with the adaptable dwelling unit provisions in the bylaw. Nothing's impossible.
Sure, I, this is, to me, I think it's a great idea, but I have hesitancy about not having that adaptable unit, and I understand the rationale in the report and what fellow members have said. But I just, I, it's so important going forward in our community to have accessible homes for people, and every time we take one out, that's one less spot somebody can live. So I, you know, I have real hesitation and reservations about not providing that unit. So that's a sticking point for me, but I'll let somebody else have it.
Councillor Rintul?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Peedy, for the presentation. Really puts, I think you put a personal spin on it, which was nice to see, I appreciate it. I'm curious, the site drawings that were in the presentation in our package, I don't see who prepared them.
I did.
Okay. And then a question through to staff. At what point in the process are drawings, not necessarily the architectural drawings, but the building locations, et cetera, verified by something other than the applicant's drawings?
Through the chair to Councillor Rintul. That typically happens at building permit stage. However, we do have older surveys in the files, the property files, for this property and many others, that basically confirm the positioning of the existing structure.
So to clarify, it would be a requirement prior to a building permit being issued to see some revised drawings, a building location certificate, something of that nature to accompany this application?
Well, these are just development permit plans, so there's, if and when the development permit is approved, there's a whole new set of plans that come in for the building permit that do show all that stuff, yes?
Thank you.
And much more detail.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Councillor O'Keefe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I like it, like that you're using the house. I have no problem with the first two variances, that your rationale makes sense. I'm stuck on the adaptable units as well. So one thing I was wondering, I know you, I think you covered it in your letter, but I need a bit more understanding for myself as to why you couldn't, instead of making them two-story units, why you couldn't have Unit A or Unit B on one floor, and then Unit C on the other, and make that, make just a ground-floor unit adaptable. It seems from the floor plans here is that, it looks like there's a fair amount of space that's lost having stairwells right in the middle. So I'm just thinking, if it was just one big broad unit taking up the whole floor space, that you might gain some space there?
May I respond? Yeah, thank you for that question. I love that question. Because I actually did a fairly extensive bit of work to design exactly the condition that you're talking about, with an adaptable unit on the main floor, and then the upper floor would just really be a hallway, a closet, a stairwell going up to a unit on the second floor. I love those plans. Those are really efficient use of space. But what I ran into, and this is what I do in my day job, which is deal with the building code, the building, if you have any part of one unit over another, the building code deals with that building for some very important fire and safety issues. It deals with that building completely different than if all the, if all the units are side-by-side. No unit is above another. If we went with that up-down configuration like I preferred, and like you're talking about, it would mean a significant amount of refurbishment of the existing units, basically to rebuild all of the exterior walls, and it just made the project unviable. So at that point, we pivoted and focused all our energy on this side-by-side configuration, rather than, you can see here, I've labeled this side-by-side. I did have a complete set of drawings in the up-down configuration, but the building code just sunk me, for lack of a better way to say it.
The other thing I was wondering is, do you have any flexibility in terms of making maybe Unit C a bit bigger? Like, do you have, do you have any room to come further out? I'm looking at the plan, like, into the patio area?
Yeah.
Even if it meant that we had to provide a variance? I'm not sure from this, I can't tell how close you are to the, like, where the setback is, so whether there's any potential for that?
Right.
To make it big enough in order to make it adaptable? I don't know how many more square feet you need.
Yeah. Fair question. And I'm also very sensitive to the mayor's point about how close the building is going to be perceived as being to the street. What we have currently designed, and you can notice that the front of the building kind of jogs, that's because the building is not parallel to the front property line. And when we transpose the front property line back, the required setback, that's where those, all the points of the jog kind of come to there. There's an additional provision in the bylaw to allow a front porch in this zone to project out farther, and we don't take advantage of all of that room here with our front porch in the patio area, but we take advantage of some of it. And so, long story short, it would not be impossible to find room on the site for adaptable, but it means changes inside the building, wherever the building just becomes much less efficient. The bathroom gets bigger, the hallways get wider. And I totally get what Councillor Garnett said about this. We don't want to lose adaptable housing units. I'm a big proponent of that. Some of you may be familiar with, in days gone by, Sanwich developed a very comprehensive adaptable housing guideline, similar to Sydney's. I was a co-author of that. That was my work back in the day. I did all the illustrations for that. I'm a big, big fan of that. On the other hand, I think that there are some circumstances where we can, we can meet a different housing need that is equally important, and is the best use of that piece of property in that building. So I'm, we've come forward with a design that does not include adaptable housing units. We think that's a valued contribution to the housing stock, even though it doesn't have adaptable units. Just back to the boulevard for a minute, it doesn't show in this picture really, but I can assure you that there are no dandelions on the boulevard. Those dandelions are all on my property. Okay, so, committee, we've had a good discussion. Any further questions? Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll move the development variance permit application. Sorry, did you have another question? No, okay, sorry. The development application number DV100274 and development permit application DP100781 for the construction of a four-unit townhouse development be forwarded to the advisory planning commission for further review and comment, subject to the following condition: one, that prior to review by the advisory planning commission, the applicant submitted a report prepared by a qualified professional assessing the functionality of the driveway at the proposed width.
I'll second that.
And a proposed amendment?
Proposed amendment to that to include a traffic engineering report, impact on the tandem parking spots.
Okay, is that a friendly amendment?
That's fine, I'll accept that.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. So I guess just a question on that, is, in terms of cost for those, is that something the town would do, or the proponent would need to do?
Staff?
The proponent.
Okay, so is it still a friendly amendment?
I guess what I'm struggling is, is I agree that it's an issue, so I just, I'm not familiar enough with the guidelines in terms of whether we would be allowed to say no. So if the engineer comes back and says, "Oh yeah, it's definitely a hazard when somebody has to back onto a busy street," yeah, that's, that is a safety issue. But whether council has the authority to say, to tell someone that you can't build because it's not safe to do that.
So, Scott?
If I can, Mr. Chair, defer that maybe to Mr. Newcombe, respond. Thank you. So initially, when this application came in, that was staff's first response to it, that the tandem parking would need to go. The parking bylaw is pretty clear that for multifamily development, the vehicle needs to leave the property in a forward motion, which is obviously not what's happening here. We did a little more research, including getting a legal opinion on this, and the park, those two parking spaces are considered legal non-conforming, so they are grandfathered, even with the change in use on the property. So it's technically not possible to sort of say no directly to having those spaces on the site. We also did discuss this with engineering staff, and they felt that although the situation's not ideal, they didn't have any serious concerns.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, Mr. Newcombe, just so that I understand completely, you are saying that it was addressed by, that my concerns were also addressed at the staff level, and that regardless of what an engineer comes back, a traffic engineer comes back, or a traffic consultant comes back with, these spots, these are existing tandem parking spots, are non-conforming legal, so we don't have any authority. Is that correct?
Directly pertaining to those spots, they may continue to use them regardless of the change in use on the property, yes.
Okay, in that case, I would withdraw my friendly amendment, because if it's not going to have an impact on it, then there's no sense in spending the money.
Okay, so we're back to the original motion, and we've had a full discussion, no additional changes. I'll call a question. All in favor? opposed? That's carried. Thank you. So that's going to get referred to the APC, and that completes our agenda, so a motion to adjourn, please?
Second?
Okay. All in favor? Opposed? That's carried, and we're adjourned.